Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District.
Okay, all right, I'd like to call the meeting to a water here at Grafton and Athens School District. And we can have introductions here.
I'm Hardy Merrill from Grafton.
Kathy Cian Goodwin from Grafton.
Jim Vazina, Finance.
Angela Cardier, Principal. Nicole Barnett, Admin Assistant Superintendent.
Andy Haas, Superintendent.
And Krista, if you're on.
Yep, Krista Gay remotely from Athens. I do have to hop at 6:00 though. I'm sorry, I'm in a different time zone. I have to hop in an hour.
Okay, thank you for coming. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I do not have any.
I do have a letter for an appointment with Blackboard if Bellis Falls on board. So do I, can I have an item on the agenda to at least read it? But so you had a resignation on the board.
Yeah, so you should, you'll need to announce that and then we, I believe we have it already posted.
Yes.
And so then, so then you'll have to, you'll have to appoint someone at some point.
Can we do that tonight or do we have to wait if there's any other?
You're gonna have to find somebody that's willing to do it.
Yeah, you gotta, and you'll have to see, you have to leave it out there, see if anyone's interested. If more than one person, you as a board will have to make a decision.
So I can't appoint tonight even though I have this?
Why are we appointing somebody to the high school board?
Because a Grafton representative for the union board for Bellis Falls resigned.
And, and, and the reason, just to expand on that, the high school board is a union board.
Right.
Each town elects their person to represent them at the board.
Yeah.
So, so within the Athens-Grafton, there's one member from Athens, there's one member from Grafton. And then the way the statute reads is it goes back to the school board to appoint a successor for the remainder of that term.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
So can I put under new business to be?
Yeah.
Communications and Publications, anybody out there that has any concerns or questions for the board tonight? There's none? So we need to approve the minutes of November 9th.
The only thing I noticed was it had me as missing, not there, but I made several comments in the body of the minutes.
Right.
So I think I want to add.
It's because we knew you were there in spirit.
Nicole, do you need one more?
So we need to add Hardy Merrill as a member attending, a board member attending. Any other corrections or edits? Or I'll say, and I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
All in favor of the motion and with the amendment of adding Hardy's name on the attendance? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think I was there, so I think I have to abstain.
That's correct. Uh, no, we've got you here last month.
I'm sorry, I, I might have missed, yeah, sorry, there was one meeting I missed, I thought it was that one.
Yeah, you were there.
Oh, you were there.
All right, my apologies. I was thinking that was the meeting I missed, I apologize, okay.
Um, so we have reports tonight and basically we're, it will be Finance, right? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Angela, Principals report.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Um, so first enrollment, we have 34 students, 13 Athens, 19 Grafton, and two are in Westminster. That projections document is current that I shared with you, Hardy.
Yeah, could you remind, 13 in Athens?
Yes, 13 Athens, 19 Grafton, two Westminster. Um, we are doing a celebration of lights next week. Our Climate and Culture Committee has planned a week of fun for the students and some craft making. The committee members will put up white lights throughout the entire building. You might have noticed that some are already up, they're probably unplugged though. All rooms will be decorated with lights as we head into winter break and into the new year. And then on Thursday, all students are going to be making crafts to bring home to their families as gifts. Winter sports are all set to go, all parents that wanted to chaperone skiing at Okemo are all signed up and ready to go pending some background information checks. And then we're ready to start at Okemo, Keen Ice, and Grafton Trails on January 11th. We have our extended after-school care up and running on Wednesdays and Thursdays. We have two teachers for each of those days. And the rough schedule that they begin at 3:00, there's some outdoor time, a snack, and then around 4 o'clock, student-led kind of interest activities begin. So they've done some cooking, some arts and crafts, they go down to the pond, they're doing some experiments down there with the ice. And then at 4:30, there is typically a closing circle with dismissal at 4:45. Our teachers have been busy with some math and nature-based learning coaching. We have Liza from Antioch University who's been working with teachers the past few weeks on the implementation of nature-based learning and supporting engaging students in standards-based lessons while out in nature. And then Lily from All Learners Network, which is a math sort of programming that we use, have met with our classroom teachers and math interventionists, looking at data and improving practice and differentiating some learning opportunities for students. And then last thing to report is that the 3rd and 4th grade students led by Vanessa Stern are going again to the Athens Community Forest next week on the 20th, I think that's Wednesday, to hang up some homemade bird feeders throughout that trail. That they'll be making the day before.
What are the dates for the after-school care?
Wednesdays and Thursdays.
Um, I have a question, can you, why did we switch from Strat into Okemo?
Um, so the entire, all of the elementary schools that go skiing use Okemo. Some benefits of using Okemo is that it is a bit closer to the school. I know for some families coming from other places, Stratton was closer, but Okemo is like 10 miles closer than Stratton's, and we were able to get a better rate. Yeah, I, that's really the reason.
Because it was a better rate, okay.
Yeah, in location, and then the other, the other factor, only because we had so much trouble getting staff to go to Stratton, they still have to give up more of their time than they would if they went to Keen Ice or the ponds. And the roads back from Stratton and to Stratton are a little less maintained if you think about the way to get there from here. Going towards Okemo, it is less traveling and the roads are better maintained. I had quite a time trying to get there last year. And more of our staff are able to commit to driving in that direction as well. Not me, I won't be skiing with the folks, but our staff that will be. And then we were looking at combining some busing for students. And all of our elementary schools use Okemo, so it just made the most sense.
Yeah, I think we started the conversation last summer about how we might be able to maximize the various schools. They all tend to, you know, three of our four elementary schools go skiing, so how do we maximize that so we don't have three buses showing and maybe just one bus, you know? And same thing for ice skating and stuff like that, so we're working towards that. It's a little logistics trying to get it all worked out, but Okemo seems to, and the other piece is like, we're continuing to work on, is there, is there a more streamlined way for parents on rentals? Like, can we as a SU do something so that each school doesn't have to piecemeal things up there, so?
Do they have ice skating? Do they have ice skating at Okemo?
So when, last year when I spoke with Chris Saylor, who runs the winter sports programs up at Okemo, they were going to, and so we were gonna save some money and not travel to Keen Ice and just send all of our kids who wanted to go skiing, snowboarding, or ice skating to Okemo. And then this fall, we found out they weren't, so there is the ice house, but that they weren't going to offer that as a winter sport for this coming year. So then we pivoted and we're back at Keen. And they did work with us to give us a better rate because we had to go to our PTO last year because we didn't have the funds in our local budget for winter sports to support the costs there. Most kids want to go ice skating. Does that answer your question, Krista?
Oh, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
New business and discussion, if any action is needed. We review and approve the FY '25 budget for Athens and Grafton. You're on. You're on.
I'd like, you can go to. Okay, um, so this hasn't increased a lot. You know, we're up 80,455, understanding that that's a 4.6% increase from the previous year. It's probably one of the lowest. And, and I just want to cap some of the increases. So health insurance increased 16.4%, and so we're up 25,000. The assessment, the assessment from the SU is up 55,000. And again, just, just a couple of quick items. So special education, I think we were up 800,000.
800,000.
And the transportation, because we leased buses, new buses, you know, roughly 167,000 there. So the, the SU, and I just want to say, probably the, one of the best items was Andy. Andy integrated.
Best item, yeah. I'm not the best item in there.
Well, you are, Andy, but, but Shelley, who's doing MTSS.
Yeah, she's her.
And I mean, I, I think, I think, I will say this, out of any district that I've ever been in, I do think you guys are on track.
Great.
And I mean, for, for curriculum and staff development, I, I will say, I hope you guys can hang in and, you know, follow Andy's lead because I just think you're gonna come out with some, some awesome education. So essentially, that's it with the 55,000. You know, not a lot of other differences, you know, contracted services, we're up 9,000, I'm not sure what that is. But anyways, it's probably something relating to, to some of the, some of the, yeah, you're right, let's, let's take a look. Yes, and, and in the back page, I'm looking at page, see, that's a 5-3-2-1. So we gotta find 5-3-2-1. All right, so what went up audit? Okay, so anyways, we've got, we've got the money in, in for the audit this year. And I will say, we're hopeful that, that Ron Smith is gonna do some delivery of the giraffes.
I was gonna say, but next week?
Next week. I mean, I emailed them today and said, Ron.
And I believe from that, we're expecting another circular.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, yeah. I'm sure. So I, I will say though, I mean, I, I think keeping in mind with teacher salaries, that's, that's up a step, if a teacher had to go up a step. And we did put some monies in for potential negotiated contract. So I just, by and large, I mean, I think 4.6 is, is probably a sweet spot for a budget now.
What is MTSS?
Multi-tiered.
Go ahead.
Multi-tiered systems of support.
Okay.
So regular, regular ed initiative, how you support kids.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The budget, I think, is, is, is where it is based on what we've experienced last year and what it looks like going forward for this year. I think the key thing we've got to start looking at here is that if you take out the tuition from the number that we're just looking at, it's $1,005,289.44. And if you divide that by 34 kids, that's $44,989 a student.
That's correct.
That may be sustainable this year, and there's a lot of questions because we really don't know what's gonna happen this year.
Right.
Based on what the legislature has done with Act 127.
Yep.
So going forward, we're gonna have to seriously look at, because the headcount does not look like it's going to be blowing up in future years. The projection that I got here shows us at 32, 30, 33, and 28 going forward in future years. So it's pretty much steady where we are right now. And the question is, I don't think we can support $44,969 or more every year. I think that's, that's where we are, so.
And I think we may have to begin the conversation, at least to be prepared, looking at incoming numbers. Do you, do you start with reducing like at a kindergarten level?
Yeah.
Right, and letting those school choice out kind of thing? Or do you start at the other end and reducing down there? I mean, there's, there's pros and cons to both of those. And I think looking at each as a model, you know, a student who's maybe been in this building for a full career, you might want to let them go through the building.
Yes.
And as students are coming in and doing it, phasing out that way. But it's a difficult conversation, but I think we could, we should start preparing some.
We need to think about it forward.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I mean, I put together a little headcount sheet. If you want to copy it, we can hand it out, but basically, you know, taking it from high school right down to kindergarten.
Yep.
Um, can I ask a question? 5341. Um, guidance, 10, or 5321, sorry.
What page?
Uh, 10.
Page 10, yep.
5321. There's 15,000. What, I think that should be 5341, but I'm looking.
5321 is your guidance person, whoever that is, is that a time timer?
Yeah, I don't think it's supposed to be there. I think it's under.
Well, let's look in the back.
Okay.
And the back, let's see who's under guidance. And I'm a little.
The counselor and clinician, is that the clinician?
I'm looking on page 21, it's right in the middle, and I have, if this is not correct, Tracy.
Yeah, Tracy is the, but she should be the guidance teacher, right up top?
Yep.
So it looks like she's on there twice, no?
No. Point six, she's on there for point six?
It is a week.
Yeah.
So, and if, if you want to move, we can move her.
Well, where did you think she was getting paid from, on the other account or?
Hi. We're talking about that one that you pointed out, Mandy. So. I think she's right here, right, guidance services, teacher salaries, isn't that her?
Yes, right there, yep.
Yeah.
So that 49 checks with that 49.
Yeah, but then what about that 15?
That's, that's, doesn't matter, we don't care about that 15, we care about that one, which is contracted service. So should you need to contract out?
Oh.
For?
For like an assessment or something?
So the reason I'm asking is, we, we built money into the SU budget for that.
Okay.
I just wanted to, we've, we've done that with all the other schools, and it just might have been an oversight because a lot of those lived in psych services.
Yep.
They hold them out, so yours might have lived in a different, in guidance as opposed to psych services.
Yep, yep.
So we missed it, so I apologize for that. But we should pull that out and that would reduce.
Okay.
All right, so who's taking away the 15 then?
The 15.
I would recommend taking the 15 away on page 10.
Yep.
Under 2120, guidance, guidance services.
Right.
Side of 15,000 for contracted services, okay.
Can you just clarify, so then where is the clinician's salary, or is that how?
The clinician, the clinicians, we moved this year all into special education. So all, and that had to do with a payroll issue.
Oh, I knew this, okay.
Okay.
Is that the retirement?
Yes, that's why the payroll, but again, for full explanation, that's one, that increased our special ed assessment because of that. But then on top of that, with Shelley, because Shelley oversees much of those regular ed assessments and things like that, was, was to move the dollars to her so that each building wasn't carrying that. So that would be a reason to reduce that, that's.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Okay, so the headcount sheet that I just put out, basically, I, I just try to keep an idea, we talk, what's our trends? Well, if you look way over in the front column, which says total, you can see that we had 12 kids in high school that are going out this year.
Wow.
So that's, that's gonna drop that number pretty big, especially since in grade seven and eight, we only have four in the eighth grade. So four people are gonna go up and 12 people are gonna go out, and the high school number's gonna go down. And then if you keep going down, you can see we have 34 projected this year or right now. And next year, maybe we'll only have 32, 30, 33, I'm not sure, but, but the trend is in the low 30s. And you can see that it's pretty well split between Athens and Grafton. My number was off one because I didn't know where to put one of the people that was added last month. So really, I think Athens has 40 kids on the bottom, Grafton has 40, there's two in Westminster instead of the three I have there. And a total is 82, all in this district for, for Grafton, Athens. And that's gonna shrink, it's gonna keep doing, because if the numbers stay at the 30s, the high school's gonna go down more, and it's all gonna level out. And basically, your tax rates are split between 50/50 between, pretty much depending on how the students fall off between the high school and the school. So just trying to show you a little bit of the trend here.
So when you gave us the per pupil cost of 44,000 or what, 917,700?
Yes.
Is that for the 34 children or the 82?
That's for 34 plus 14, yep. Which is your tuition kids, 7th and 8th grade, plus the 34 students that are here.
Okay.
And I think what we would need to do is run some numbers. Again, if the, if the need was to, or the, you know, to give, to inform you all if you were to not offer a kindergarten classroom, but offer that as a, a school choice.
Yeah.
What would that cost be versus a teacher?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
And so you have, that we gotta start looking at.
And our tuition is still the state average?
So no, so what you.
7th and 8th grade.
So Rockingham, students who go to Rockingham, Rockingham sets their tuition. And so any, so essentially, any student who goes to a public school, you pay their announced tuition rate. Right. So if they go to Leland and Gray, whatever Leland and Gray has, has set as their announced tuition rate, you will pay that. It doesn't matter what the state average is. If they go to Green Mountain, you would do the same thing if they go to Rockingham. If a student made a choice to go to Compass, then you only pay the state average. Right. Which could be less than the announced tuition rate of a, of a public school. You all made a decision that you, for this school, you lowered your announced tuition rate.
Yeah.
Under the state average for a student coming into your school, so.
Unfortunately, we didn't have any, obviously.
No. We had, was it 15,000?
No, no, I mean, we didn't get any kids come in.
No.
As additional students that don't live in the area.
Correct.
In the Rockingham?
Tuition rate is 21,000.
21,000.
Now, when they set it for this next year, their budget is gonna, we know their budget's gonna go up just from what's been happening.
Yep.
Can't go up probably more than 5%. So I would want to make sure that whatever they come up with, if it's more than 5%, they only raise the tuition rate by 5%.
Well, I think, I think, you know, it is, it's within your, I guess, right, you, you could petition Rockingham to, to, the district just charge the, the announced tuition rate. So you, you know, you could ask them for that, I mean, that's, but I, I can't guarantee they're going, you know, what they're gonna do, so.
Now, the, the other thing that, of course, there's three things that you're, some into this over the course of this year, which we don't know yet. What, but the next one is what's the headcount gonna be that they utilize on the state? And right now, if I look at the sheet that Jim gave me, it's about 124. So that 124 would be divided into the number that I mentioned earlier, the 1837. And then you have the yield. Now, the yield that the state came out with, the commissioner of taxes, was quite low, $9,800 and something dollars, which is, compares to 15,000 a year ago. Now, that's because the ADMs in this new law are up significantly versus what they were last year. As an example, we had 73 last year, and now we have 124, and nobody knows how this is all gonna shake out.
So 124, that weighted number?
Yes, that's the weighted number.
So.
Under the new law. So we're in a state of flux this year, but my recommendation is to go ahead and approve the budget as it's set. We do have, as you know, quite a bit of surpluses, so we're gonna be able to manage this a little bit. I guess that's my next question, when will we have that opportunity to manage? When will we know what we, what we want to do, what we need to do to keep our tax rate, you know, not from skyrocketing out of assistance?
You mean this year or, or in the future?
Yeah, for the, for the coming year, okay, so, so, you know, we, we approved this budget. And then normally, there's a sheet that comes out that says, this is what every, you know, what's your tax rate? And then normally, there's a sheet that comes out that says, this is what every, you know, what your tax rate is. And this is what the high school is, and then the, it's melded together to come up with an estimate of what that's gonna be. And usually, the way you can manage that, is with your other revenue, which for us, would be surplus. This year, we said we were gonna take some from the SU kickback that we got. Plus seventy-five thousand dollars of our surplus that we had from a couple of years ago.
Right.
Which reduced our number and brought us into line with what our tax rate was.
So I think the high school is, um. You know, their drop debt is somewhere, um, just after, half, halfway through, uh, January. That they need to set their budget, so we're not gonna know the high schools. Where, where they're, you know, for what that's gonna hit you all as tax rates until they finalize their budget, so. See, he, he's, he's gonna, I, I was gonna say, we're not even gonna know, you know, until at least January, but yeah, so. I mean, you're, I think tax rates and all that stuff are, are not coming out until much later this year.
Yeah, but I guess that's one, to manage it, you gotta be able to.
Yeah.
Use some of your surplus, and I mean, that's a board decision, the board has to make a, a, you know, a recommendation, right? How does that work?
Uh, I just wanna. And, so, there's a difference of opinion.
Yeah.
Okay, I've been brought up this way. This budget will be approved by the voters, all the voters.
Yeah.
Now, if you happen to have fifteen thousand left over because you didn't spend it in one account. The voters have approved you utilizing that money. Now, for, most boards will say, well, if it's surplus, we wanna use it here. We wanna put it over here, we wanna put it towards capital expenditures and, and fix some stuff. But, but lawyers have given different, um, different opinions on it, some say, oh no. You have to go back to the voters, after they've given you approval, and ask them again, what can we use this for?
So, so yeah, so the recommendation we got was that you would create articles.
Yeah.
That, you would say, like, we wanna put, that, of the fif- let's, we're gonna use fifteen thousand, we wanna put five thousand towards taxes in the future. We wanna do five thousand towards capital improvements, and we wanna do five thousand through, um, to, uh. Trying to think of something really specific, you know, buy a van, right, and so. And, and, or, if you don't do anything, it automatically goes back to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
So that, that's the, the rule. As Jim says, what he was brought up out of what I was brought up, I mean, we, we have, there was a difference there, so.
Okay, so we had surplus in two thousand twenty-one, and we had articles for that last year, which were approved.
Yeah.
Uh, and voted upon.
Yeah.
This year, we have a surplus from twenty-two of, uh, two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand four-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
Yeah.
So we have that, that we will have to allocate this year. Plus, we have, have some extra probably from the SU, uh, that was a hundred thousand dollars, we may not have to use all that.
Yeah.
So.
So I think, I think that would. The, the decision on what to do with those funds.
Right.
Would also factor into some of the conversation long term, but if you're even talking of. The theory, and I'll say the theory hypothetically, of, 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 because there's nothing, we, no decision has been made, I want that. You know, it's just a conversation, if you were to say we're not gonna run a kindergarten classroom, you're talking six years of a phase out, potentially, or, or. Or, or maybe less, but at least a few years, and so, you still have a maintenance of the building, of investment in the building, and so. It's potentially, you can take that two-forty to do something else.
I could, let me get the building survey that was done, this building, yeah, which basically said, uh, about three years out from now. Is when we have to spend some money here.
Yeah.
Like three-hundred-and-fifty thousand or more.
Wow.
Uh, that was the estimate in the. Report, which everybody should read, it's online. I got it from one of your.
Yeah, we tried to make them accessible.
I just went to our particular site.
Yeah, and then.
The board should, uh, should do that.
Yeah, and then, um, you are, um, you did approve for the driveway to get done. Done that. Um, when I talked to him about the painting, you remember, we didn't get any bids on paint, I know we're all over the place, so I'm sorry, I'm just thinking of it. Um, when I asked Steve, I said, geez, how come no one bid, he said, his, his thought was, it was just not the right season. So, so paint, you know, so, so he, he was, he was recommending we go back out to bid. Um, for that piece, maybe in the, um, late winter, uh, something to think about, and. Again, I mean, it, so, you know, to maintain this building, it needs to be painted, it had a minimum, so.
On, on the one-twenty-four. How, did they explain how they came up with that one-twenty-four?
The what?
The weighted.
The weighted, there's a.
I saw that, and.
Uh, that stretches from this side of a spreadsheet to this side of a spreadsheet, and comes up with a number.
Can the school argue?
No, are we, we talking about the?
I, I mean.
Are we talking about act one-twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, uh, act one-twenty-seven set, and, um, it puts a higher weight. On a student who, uh, is identified as ELL or English Language Learner. Um, and, uh, poverty, poverty is, is, is given a little higher weight, small schools given a little. Uh, small, inaccessible type of school, like, it, it's, it's really defined. Special education is not even taken into consideration as part of it.
Which is ridiculous.
I think so.
It used to be, um, the, who got free and reduced lunch?
Well, now, it's universal lunch, there is still a mechanism that we have to report on that. Um, but that's what gives you your poverty rate, uh, which is a horrible term, I mean, I don't, you know, like using that term, but that's the term that's used. And so, um, but there is a, a, an FAQ the state put out, um, on that, I, I, you know, we, uh. Will make accessible on our website for anyone who wants to read it, cause it's easier to find that way, but it's, uh. Not, not saying it's a great FAQ, but it does give, it shows all the numbers and how they come up with them, and, and gives some rationale around it. But, um. I don't think we're getting hurt horribly on it. Um, I don't, because I'm, because unfortunately, as an SU, broadly, we, we do have a poverty rate. Um, so, um, that's, um, but, um, you know, it's. We, you know, our ELL students are, are very small, minimal for the whole, that's a SU.
What about, um, I'm, I'm thinking of Wyndham School. Can any of those, I know they wanna close that school, can any of those kids come down to Grafton?
Yeah, so, so the superintendent, the superintendent, yeah, so the superintendent contacted me, um, and Angela, um, last week, was it, last week? Or, and, um, and said, uh, was gathering information for their community, um, on. And their board, based on, uh, if they made that decision, um, you know, he said. Would we have capacity, and I said, yes, we'd have capacity for all fifteen, um, was how I started the conversation. Um, without even asking Angela, I just figured, figured we'd be more than welcome to, to welcome students. Um, and so we gave them the information, start time, stop time, and stuff like that. It would only be, their expectation is only for this year, because they're hoping to be able, if they have to close, they're hoping to reopen next year. Uh, to find a, you know, an administrator and stuff like that. Um, so, it wouldn't be anything to kinda look long term at this time. On, um, the, what seemed to be the big issue was transportation, so the only way is, is a one-sixty-seven, is that? One-twenty-one, pardon me, which is a dirt road, and it gets pretty greasy, um, and.
Can drive it if he has the right equipment.
Yeah, I, I, I did talk with Stanley about a bus going down there, and he was not confident that it was good, because that's really what they were asking is. Would we be willing to send the bus down, you know, that'd be part of a cost. Um, Stanley was very worried about a bus on a regular, during the winter time, and the, and the spring going down.
I think the, the only option there would be to send the bus down to, uh, source.
Townsend.
Townsend.
Right.
Right, could, could the tar road all the way down?
Tar all the way.
And then you can go up to Townsend, and then if we met them in Townsend, and brought them here, that would be a, an option.
Right, so, so, so they're putting it out to see how many families might be interested in where they're looking, cause they're also looking at Floodbrook, they're looking at. Um, some other options that those families could do, so.
Could it happen that the parents of these children could have, to come here for an open house?
We could definitely invite them.
I mean, do everything you can to get these kids to come here.
Yeah, I can, I'll give them a.
I think once they see this building, and see the teachers, and see what we do here. I think we, we could really sell that.
Yeah, again, I, I just wanna be clear that it would only be for this year, because if they reopen that school. If they reopen Wyndham Elementary, they could not, um, school choice their, their kids here anymore. The parents would have to pay a tuition if they wanted to stay, so, it, it would only, it. I just wanna caution you all that it, it wouldn't be a long term.
But that tuition would be far less than what they're paying for that school, overall.
So I can't speak for the voters of that district, but I, I think they cherish their school, from what I understand, the same way you cherish your school. And, and I, I think that, you know, that, that's one of the things that's great about Vermont is, is everyone likes their, their local. School, no matter how big the size, or little the size, and I, I don't disagree with you, would, you know, um. It'd be, you know, um, and I'd love to have more kids here, and, you know, I mean, I, having this conversation that we started is, is a. Very difficult conversation to have about, you know, not, you know, keeping a school open, but, um, it's just. In, in looking at it, what we have learned this year, um, is, if. If, this, another district who has an elementary school cannot. Pay another district to send their students to that, because they're operating in an elementary school. So, they, they can't, they, they can't give you any money. If they're gonna ho- if they're gonna host an elementary school themselves, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So like, seventh and eighth grade, you don't have a seventh and eighth grade classroom, but you're not part of a Rockingham. You haven't, you're not bound by them, so you just give a voucher and kids go wherever they want. If all of a sudden you were to say, nope, we're gonna do seventh and eighth grade here, then families could not go anywhere else, they have to go here.
Yeah.
Is it inappropriate that Angela could send, I don't know who, the superintendent over there, or whoever. Our newsletters, so they get some information about our school.
Yeah, I, I said, I'll, I'll reach out to Bob, is, um, uh, is the superintendent, I'll reach out to him tomorrow. And just say, we would love to be able to provide as much information, you know, the board would love to have an open house if families are interested. Uh, because it could be a travel issue, but getting them here and seeing what we do here, might help. Them understand that it's probably better for those kids, so, happy to do that, and then we'll put Bob, I mean, Bob's got her email, but. Um, start working on it and how we can, uh, do that, yeah.
And as far as our budget, I know it's set, but is there any other trimmings we can do on this budget?
Which was a hundred and fifty.
Just to ask him.
Not Angela, I know, I mean, I know you've worked it pretty tight and. I mean, I'm just. I, I mean, I, I think the only places, and, and this is where it gets really challenging, is you have a full-time nurse here. But it's in, totally difficult to find a part-time nurse, you know, um.
Can I say something about the nurse? She's actually going to get her health certification and going back to take classes.
Right, so then.
So.
Bides you an opportunity to offer health classes and whatnot, so.
So moving, so, looking ahead, the hope would be that she would kinda have two roles here, it's not just.
I'm just saying, when you were asking about trimming, those, those are, that's the only places I can see, cause you're so, you already got doubled up classes, you know, your combined classrooms, your.
You've got a part-time counselor.
Yeah.
Um, what, you know, you mentioned, join away with kindergarten at some point. But you also have the early childhood. Could the kiddos that would be coming to kindergarten, could you extend the age on the, on early childhood?
Like to be younger, like get pre-K in here?
No, I'm saying, if a child is five, then they go to a childcare program. Or extend that program to count for not having a kindergarten.
You, you mean allow five-year-olds to go to pre-K?
Yeah, if you were gonna close the, the, um.
Um, so, five-year-olds can, um, go to pre-K still, there, there, um. There is some mechanism, we've had some five-year-olds stay, if they're, developmentally, it's appropriate. Typically, it's not appropriate, uh, for a five-year-old to be in pre-K, um.
I'm just trying to increase the numbers.
No, I understand, I know. Again, we're having, I, I, I didn't come in here prepared to have this conversation.
We're just kinda brainstorming.
Well, I, I just, I mean, I, and the only reason I say that is, I think there's a lot of things we have to unpack and look at, I think it's great that. That's something we hadn't thought about, we can definitely talk to Jennifer about that.
Yeah, I, I think that's the, the next year, okay, that's the stuff we have to deal with this next year.
Yeah.
Uh, what we're talking about here.
But we at least need to get that information.
Yeah, the move was what we've got, so.
So we will, um, we'll definitely look at, um, reaching out to Wyndham Central. Uh, about the Wyndham School, and, and see what we can do, um, and, and then I think, um. Start working with Angela and, and thinking ahead, of looking at what are possibilities and proposals, and. Um, you know, I think, uh, attrition is always a great way to look at how you can downsize if you have to, um. You know, as opposed to, you know, uh, reducing things, but then also, you know, what are your incoming numbers?
Yeah.
Not this coming year, but the following year, I mean, maybe there's a large pre-K group that we're unaware of, so. Wanna be, um, so.
So do we need a, um.
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Minus the fifteen thousand, is that it? One, one million? So, one million eight hundred twenty-two thousand.
Even?
Even.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the Grafton Athens budget at one million eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the coming year.
I need a second on that?
You're a small board, you don't think, no.
All in favor of the motion made by Hardy for our budget for twenty-twenty-four. For one million eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
And, aye.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Jim, and, and Hardy for your work on this.
I don't know how to remove my thumb.
I can do it for you, hang on, I'll do it for you.
Another thing, finances. Which, um, basically, I don't see any real major issues there.
Nope, I didn't either, I went through it, and, uh. You, Angela. So, yeah, I went through it, your revenues looked fine, the last page, I didn't see any problem there, um. And I, I just, I went through it, I just didn't pick up anything that looked way out of whack.
So, and this is, of course, it's in flux, and, uh, you know, we'll get closer and firmer as we move through that a couple of months.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Hardy, do you want some spares for budget?
I'll take them.
It is well.
Jim, thank you very much for everything that you've done for us here. Okay, moving on, um, did we see the letter from Mary Clark of Grafton? Um, and I'll just read the letter, this was dated December fourteenth, dear Kathy and Slough Board members. I'm writing to you today to let you know that I would like to fill Darcy Sprague's seat. On the Bellows Falls Union High School Board as the representative for Grafton. Grafton is a representative who is well-informed and is ready to serve the voters. Voting on the budget for Bellows Falls Union High School is right around the corner. As always, I hope you know, you can count, contact me anytime, thank you for your assistance. And that's signed, Mary, um.
Who's this?
Mary Feder.
Oh, Mary Feder.
Yeah.
I'm just looking up the. Give you the statute and what you need to do, so let me just, um. You're, are you proportional to, um? Yes, so if a vacancy or a seat with, where membership is a proportion to member districts in a number, and it's closely proportioned to the relative population. And only voters residing in the member district elect school board members, so that's you, for a union, um, school district. Um. Shall notify, uh, the board of the member district, not later than five days. Of learning of the vacancy, which was done, and within thirty days after receiving notice. The board member district shall appoint a person who otherwise eligible to serve as a member of the union district. To fill the vacancy until the voters elect a successor as the annual, uh, or special meeting.
So do we have to wait for the thirty days?
Within thirty days after receiving notice, you have to appoint someone.
You have to buy them, continue appointing before them.
I'm not, Krista's still here, so I, I, I mean, I, she got, I mean, I'm not a lawyer.
Right here.
I mean, it says, within thirty days after receiving notice.
And the notice was on Tuesday, right?
We received notice on Monday, we notified you on Tuesday, so that was within the five days, you were provided that notice. Um, typically, what we have done is, most of the districts when that has happened, because it's happened at the high school and others. Um, uh, the member districts have chosen to post the position. So make an announcement, the position is open, to see if there's anyone.
It's been posted.
And then at the next, at their next meeting, if anyone's interested, to, to then have them come, so in Rockingham. Uh, there were, uh, at the, there was a few people who were interested in an open position, they came, they were invited to come and speak to the board. Um, at Westminster, when that happened, they posted. Um, and then I believe only one person applied, um, for that, and then that board appointed at their next meeting. Um, this one, your board. Um, the, the timing, it's just, like, the other boards had already met, and so it was a, it was a, a longer time before the next board meeting. So that's the only difference that just happened here, so.
So we could appoint tonight? If it's a wish, or do we have to wait for our next meeting?
Chris, Krista, if I, I, I know you can't really advise us, but in your lawyer-y.
Can you tell me the statute so I can read it?
Yeah, it's, uh, sixteen VSA seven forty-nine. And it's, uh, uh, it's the subset one.
All right, just give me a second.
Proportional to town. Yeah, um, Nicole's writing, and, and I think, I think the piece is that you might have to warn me. That's, that's what, that's why I'm saying, like, the timing here.
Yes.
Is, is we didn't get it on the agenda, um, so it may be something that you need to warn, that's.
You could probably have a special meeting.
You could have, and that, I mean, you could have a special meeting for that, yes.
So what's the question about timing?
I guess the question is, um, there is a, a member of the community who's interested in the position.
Right.
Can, can they appoint, can you all appoint tonight, or does it need to be warned for the next, uh, a special meeting or the next meeting?
Well, it doesn't say anything in here about warning in subsection one.
Right.
I mean, there's nothing in here about warning, it just says it has to be done within thirty days, so I guess. Not legal advice, but my reading of the statute would be that you could do it, um, but setting aside that, um. I, I think it, I don't know if it would be prudent to, you know, give it some more time, I mean, I only found out about this vacancy yesterday myself on Facebook. So I don't know if it's a, would be a more prudent decision to use our second meeting for a special meet, like, um, we used to meet twice a month. So I don't know if it'd be more prudent to do a virtual meeting, um, just to allow more applications to come in. Um, because to my knowledge, there wouldn't, there's not an emergency at the district level that would want us to maybe rush through with this. Uh, but that's just my personal opinion, that if we posted and give it some more time, we could maybe do a virtual meeting. Uh, the, the, whatever our next scheduled one would be, we used to do two a month, I don't know when it would be this time, but we can do a virtual meeting just to a point.
It would be the twenty-eighth, um, is the, your, your alternate scheduled date, um, is that for Thursday of the month. Um. Which, which does fall in our, our, during our school holiday, but that, I mean, if we're doing something virtual, I don't know, I don't know if you're available.
Hang on.
Um, you know, um. It's something we could put together, that's, that's not a, a challenge on that, um.
I would, is this?
Forty-eight hours on a special meeting is all we need, so.
Um.
For sign.
Yeah. Kathy, do you know, is the applicant that we received the same person who ran against Darcy?
No.
I don't know that.
No, I don't know.
No.
She isn't, she is not.
Because then my only question with that is if there's more, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to do what's prudent and fair, because like, I only found out about this yesterday, uh, from Facebook, so I'm just. I'm open to thoughts, that, that was just my only one is of, um, if there are more applicants out there, especially if this isn't the person, I have no idea who ran against her. Uh, but if there would be more interest, maybe it's worth waiting, but then I also recognize she was the first to submit, so obviously she seems eager, which is wonderful. Um, so I'm open to the opinions of my colleagues.
The, the only thing I would tell you is, I know the high school will not be voting on a budget on, what is that, the sixth, seventh, eighth? They won't be voting on January eighth on a, on a budget, or, or not, yeah, that's their next meeting, so. There, I don't know if there's an urgency before that, like, but, but even if you held a meeting on.
To do the.
The fourth, or on the twenty-eighth, it's still, there's still enough time for someone to get down there and get sworn in and do all that stuff, so you, you would have time, I'm just.
Yeah, I would say the twenty-eighth, do a special meeting, on the twenty-eighth, that gives people, anybody else wants to come in, let them come in.
Yeah.
And then we can then.
I have a deposition that day, so I likely will not be attending, but, um, that, that's fine, I just wanted just to note that.
And you can warn it, it's a one-hundred percent virtual, if you wanted to do it that way, or, um.
So I can go through Nicole with that, and.
You guys want, it's just a time now, I can work on that tomorrow.
Yeah, let's warn it for the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, well, we have a quorum, that's amazing, I could probably do it.
Well, so I don't know what Lynn and Rachel's ability, uh, is.
Lynn, okay, Rachel, are you okay for the twenty-eighth, for a virtual meeting?
Yes, it's fine.
Is there a, is there a time that's better for everyone?
Yeah, what's a good time?
We're not bound by school that day, so, so, um, I don't know what your availability is.
I'm, I'm.
When's nap time?
No nap time, we got a six-year-old now, there's no nap in happening.
Ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock, I guess, fine.
Ten o'clock?
Anything.
Rachel, does that work for you with work?
Sure.
Thank you. You should do that.
Just to know, Krista had to go, so, and just so you know, know that. All right, ten o'clock, twenty-eight.
So director's comments.
Um, I think there's been a productive meeting, it's, uh, you know, gonna be a challenging year coming up, and, uh, we're gonna have to meet that challenge.
Yeah.
I agree.
I can dittle that, and I do wish everyone, um, happy, uh, holiday and safe holiday.
Yes.
Coming up.
Yep, just you have Lynn and Rachel.
Uh, Lynn?
Uh, nothing, but Merry Christmas to all, we'll see you again on the twenty-eighth.
Hey.
Rachel?
Uh, I apologize for my tardiness, I was, I got out of work late, um, thank everybody for their work and the work on the budget, and. I'll see everybody virtually on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
And our next, um, okay, the next meeting is the twenty-eighth, on Thursday, from ten AM for virtual, and then our next regular meeting will be January. Eleven.
January eleventh.
January eleventh. That's it, here at Grafton Athens.
Are you adjourned?
Yes.
Hi.
Oh, I'm hoping to attend.
I bet, I hope that the meeting be adjourned.
Thank you, Jim.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at facteightten@gmail.com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.